Is Ben in here? Where's Ben? All right. I'm gonna ask some of our parks people to come up here in a minute. We've got a very special presentation before the start of our city council meeting. And in 1929, we had a park that got kicked off. Chesterfield Park, right in the heart of the Chesterfield former neighborhood area. And over time, it's what about 5.8, 6 acres, something like that. And a nice place in a great neighborhood. And we made a number of improvements. Put in a sports field, a basketball court, a waiting pool. But you know, since 1929, it were to a point where it kinda needs some upkeep, facelift, some changes. And our budget, working on a variety of other things, everything from streets to sewers to other things, has been a little tight. But we turned to our Parks Department and said, hey, this has to be a priority. And they agreed. And I'm gonna bring Ben Page up here to kinda tell us what they've undertaken to help us with the city and with private sector to come up with some ideas about the improvement at Chesterfield. So Ben, I'm gonna turn over you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Ben Page, Parks and Recreation Director for the City of Des Moines. I'd like to ask Kelly O'Brien from the UP to come up. And I'd like to ask a couple of our Park Board members and Friends Board members to come up. I'd like to really thank two groups. To start with, our Friends of Des Moines Parks, led by Sarah Lomire, our current president. Sarah and the entire team of the Friends of Des Moines Parks is at every turn looking for additional funding sources that are non-city funding sources to help us curate the public-private partnerships that we've been so successful today with. So due to their great work, no paid salaries, they went out and they wrote a grant and they were successful. But we're even more grateful today because the UP answered that call. The Union Pacific Railroad has a grant program that Kelly O'Brien, their director of the grant program, is here to talk about. They awarded our project our first grant to help kick this project off.
Thanks, Ben. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Councilmen and all present today. I wanna thank Sarah for writing this exemplary grant. We have a grant program at Union Pacific that actually, what qualifies is safety, workforce, and community spaces. And we're proud to be part of the Des Moines community. And today, I have a check for $25,000, the highest check in the city, in the state of Iowa. We are awarding $25,000 for the Chesterfield Park Basketball Court Project. We're pleased to be a part of this. I'm going to encourage the Friends Board to apply again. Our grant process is open in April. It ends in June. And I can't wait to see another grant from this organization.
Yeah. You wanna get a picture? Get Joe in there. And Ben, you might as well get in here. This is made after Parks and Recreation. Let's get Steve guys in the middle. Let's, Joe, come on down and we get other members of council down here with us. Come on, guys. Let's get all of our council down.
Okay. I'm gonna ask the mayor.
Mayor, why don't you move the check?
Will you help? Hold on.
Yes, Your Honor.
Yeah. You're in my name or not. All right, congratulations.
Yeah, well, thanks so much.
Absolutely. We do do. And we're gonna be back for the evening.
I know. I would like that.
I'm gonna give this to Scott, 'cause he don't trust me with that.
So we're still doing the municipal housing, right? You didn't give me that agenda. What we are?
I've got it right here.
All right. We're gonna, prior to start of our city council meeting, we're gonna have a short meeting in Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board. So for November 19th, 2018. Let's note that we call the meeting to order at 4:24. And I'm gonna ask the clerk to take the role of the board.
County.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Bozen.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Westergaard.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
Here.
Gatto.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item 2 is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Moved.
It's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Sounds unanimous. The item passes. Item 3 is approving the City of Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency Submittal of Family Self-Sufficiency Program Coordinator Grant Application to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD. This is Board Communication Number 18-603. Is there anybody in the audience like to make any comments on this? Seeing none.
Move item 3.
Item 3's been moved. Any discussion? We'll ask you all to vote.
Seven, yes.
All right. Item 4 is approving the Family Unification Program Memorandum of Understanding between the Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency and the Iowa Department of Human Services. Board Communication Number 18-604. And again, we'll open it up and see if there's anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment on this, the Unification Program Memorandum of Understanding. Anybody? Seeing no one, we'll close it.
Move. Move item 4.
Okay, item 4's been moved. Any discussion? Seeing none. Our voting is in process.
Seven, yes.
All right. That's the last item on our short agenda. Have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We sit adjourned. Thank you all. Prior to the start of our city council meeting tonight, we generally have a special message from one of our council members. And I'm gonna sort of preempt it here for just a second, then I'm gonna turn it over to our council member, Chris Coleman, who will officially take that. But we've had a series of things happen around this country that we as citizens of Des Moines certainly aren't proud of. And whether it's shootings in a school, in a church, in a synagogue, that kind of behavior is not one that shows bias and anger and violence. It is not part of Des Moines. And we hope it never is a part of Des Moines. As we look at some of the actions that have been taking place and some of the things that have happened around our city, even on Drake University campus, I think the message is, I have talked to the President of Drake University, our Des Moines Police Department, my fellow city council members. Hate and bias has no home in Des Moines, Iowa. And all of us in this room tonight, I think, pretty much feel the same way. And we have to come together, work together, to work out solutions to problems. It wasn't so long ago, after a horrific shooting in a synagogue in Pittsburgh, that even in Des Moines, Iowa, the synagogue in Des Moines, Iowa, we had a gathering at the synagogue where we all came together and showed that people of all color, all religion, all ages, gender, sexual preference, we all came together and said, not here. And I want everyone here to know that we as a council, and we working with public safety, with members of our community, we need to work together to look for solutions and make sure that we protect each other. And we have good outcomes and send a good message to all, that everyone, regardless of race, country of origin, religion, gender, everyone is welcome in Des Moines, Iowa. And we will compassionately reach out and try to serve each and everyone equally. I'm gonna turn over to our senior at-large council member, Chris Coleman. Chris?
When the mayor and I spoke earlier about this, we thought it would be a good time. Usually, we start our meetings with some sort of invocation or reflection. Tonight, I'm gonna read to you something that about a year ago, all seven of us as council members signed. It's our own personal commitment and collective commitment to making Des Moines the kind of place we want it to be for all. Here's the proclamation resolution. Whereas, Des Moines is committed to fostering compassion, diversity, tolerance, and inclusivity to all in an ever-changing world. And whereas, fostering a relationship of trust, respect, and open communication among elected officials, local law enforcement, and public safety officials, and to all the city's residents and visitors, it's essential to the city's mission of delivering efficient public services while ensuring public safety, a prosperous economy, and opportunities for youth, and a high quality of life for all in Des Moines. And whereas, the state of Iowa has a rich history of welcoming immigrants and those that are different than us, as demonstrated by Governor Ray's initiatives in the 1970s. And whereas, the City of Des Moines devotes significant resources to public safety for the protection and assurance and the welfare of all persons who reside or visit our community. And whereas, it's imperative to maintain the positive relationships throughout our diverse community that have been built up over the years. And whereas, the City of Des Moines is dedicated to developing and implementing a social equity plan to ensure that the social equity section of our Plan DSM is fully executed for the betterment of all persons living in the City of Des Moines. And whereas, the elected officials of the City of Des Moines are dedicated to providing support to the Civil and Human Rights Commission as they protect our residents and visitors, civil and human rights within the City of Des Moines. And it was affixed with the signature and the seal of the mayor, TM Franklin County. And he closed it by saying, he hereby declares that the city's values, celebrating our diversity and offering inclusive community that is supportive to all the residents and visitors of Des Moines, regardless of race, gender, sexual orientation, religion, ethnicity, national origin, or immigration status. And that we are all called upon to celebrate that diversity and our commitment to each other as a family living in community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all. And wanna thank you all for attending this evening's meeting. Let's call this meeting to order and note that it is 4:32. And I will ask the clerk to take role.
County.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Bozen.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Westergaard.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
Here.
Gatto.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item 2 is approving our agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Moved.
It's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item 3, these are items which are on our consent agenda. This is to approve the consent agenda. For those of you that have our agenda this evening, it's items 3 through 35. These are generally enacted as a singular vote unless someone, either a city council member or member from the public asks for one. Again, these are items 3 through 35B. Ask to be pulled for additional clarification or discussion on the item this evening. Item 8, Councilmember Mandelbaum wishes to speak. Item 26, Councilmember Gray votes no. Item 29B, Councilmember Mandelbaum wishes to speak. And item 29C, Councilmembers Coleman and Gatto vote no. Are there any other items that anybody in the audience would like to have pulled? Again, these are items 3 through 35 for additional clarification or discussion. Seeing none?
I will move item 3, Your Honor.
All right. And everybody would register their votes.
Seven, yes.
All right. First item, it's a public improvement. Item 8 is authorizing the Submittal of a Federal Surface Transportation Block Grant, STBG, and Transportation Alternative Program, TAP, fund fiscal year 2023, applications to the Des Moines Metropolitan Organizations, MBO. Council Communication Number 18-627. Councilmember Mandelbaum.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to talk about one item on this in particular, and I'm fine moving this package forward. But one of the things that I hope we watch pretty carefully going forward, I've generally had concern about overbuilding our roadways. And we tend to focus on a lot of some of the smaller items, but before we build out our roads, I wanna make sure it's absolutely necessary. And we're going forward with the Southeast Connector. And it's currently only planned as two lanes, although we're acquiring right-of-way and doing grading for four lanes. But there's a $20 million difference between a two-lane and a four-lane road, which is significant. And so I just wanna emphasize the importance of keeping that in mind, particularly in the larger context of discussion about budgets and roads and where we prioritize using our dollars. That, over time, that could fix a lot of sidewalks that we all talk about as a priority. So with that, I'll just move item 8.
Seven, yes.
All right. That takes us to item 29B. 29B is a purchase from the following. B is Stivers Ford, Scott Pallett, General Manager, Carl Chevrolet, Carl Moyer, Owner, Stu Hanson, Dodge City, Dan Botcher, General Manager, Dewey Ford, Dan Budger, General Manager, for 45 replacement vehicles per State of Iowa contract for use by various departments. Council Communication Number 18-600. Again, Councilmember Mandelbaum.
Thanks again, Mayor. So on this item, I've had some conversations with the manager, and this has actually changed since it was in our packet on Thursday. The questions I had were related to what we're looking at in terms of a plan to transition to electric vehicles. I think that's an important step that we need to be taking as a city, and we need to be evaluating that. In conversation with the manager and Bob Fagan, I think we've decided on a process to evaluate what is out there in the market and what we can do going forward. I think there's some unique opportunities that we should be thinking about. The VW settlement, which the state is participating in, will provide some dollars for helping communities transition. And it might, you know, some of that is trucks and other, you know, other vehicles that we might not have need for at a time, or there might not be an appropriate market solution for at the time. But I do wanna make sure that we are thinking about that and planning for an electric vehicle transition and how we can take advantage of that settlement. I think that's gonna come back to us. But I did wanna just take this opportunity, and the one item that was taken out was, there was a sedan that was gonna be purchased. And I think that's ripe for an electric vehicle, when that one vehicle, when we do make that decision. And that'll come back to council before we finalize that purchase. So with that, I'll move 29B.
Seven, yes.
All right. That completes the consent agenda and moves us to item 36, which is ordinance's first consideration. 36 is amending Chapter 114 of the Municipal Code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. Council Communication Number 18-626. A is a code revision extending snow routes on 34th Street, Guthrie Avenue, and Scott Avenue. B is a code modification related to the East Side Estates development. C is a code modification related to the Woods on the River Plate 10 development. D is a code modification related to the Brook Landing Plate 2 development. E is adding no parking area on Forest Avenue east of 31st Street. And F is adding no parking 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. school days. Restriction on the north side of Dean Avenue from East 29th Street to East 29th Court for Willard Elementary. We'll ask if there's anybody in the audience who would like to make a comment on 36, A, B, C, D, or E, which are Municipal Code Regarding Traffic Regulation Changes. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak to any of these? Seeing none. Any thoughts from the council?
Good things.
All right.
Snow route. Thank you, Jonathan.
I'd move 36, and I'd add to it approving the second and third reading according to our rules to waive the second and third reading when we have a supermajority vote.
And especially being there was nobody here to register any problem with any of that.
Exactly.
Seven, yes.
37 is extending temporary waiver of all permit fees for the repair, renovation, or replacement of structures damaged by recent flooding within the City of Des Moines. Turn to the audience and see if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak regarding waiving those temporarily at least, the permit fees for the repair, renovation, replacement of structures damaged during the floods this last year.
I'll move 37.
All right. Item's been moved. Any discussion?
Very good.
Seven, yes.
Item 38 has been pulled. The individual pulled her item regarding CIP infrastructure work in a committee. Item 39 is request from Matthew Gerhart's 7500 Bloomfield Road Lot 2 to speak regarding unfair housing, the privacy of trailer courts, and sidewalks for Bloomfield Road. Is Matthew here?
Yo.
Come on up, Matt.
Hello. Hi there. I'm Matthew Gerhart. As you already said my address. I believe on Bloomfield Road, it runs from East 14th to Indian Hill Road. And people walk on it every day and nightly, and I believe there should be sidewalks. Thanks to Joe Gatto, we got streetlights up from in front of my house to the east. And there's people walking, and there's a porch now that's really dark. And things got lights up. But we should be worried about the sidewalks. People walking up and down the, you know, the street, they're walking on gravel, rocks, you know, whatsoever. Really don't get no attention out there. Also, I'd like to talk about, I live in a trailer court, and it's like we're on sovereign ground. Nobody could help us with the situation that we had. And whatever city entity, I couldn't get any help. I'm sorry. But it just seems like we're being discriminated against. I mean, I heard people speak about equality in Des Moines, but there's not. And I'm sorry, emotional, but that's all I would say.
Okay, Joe?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Matthew, I appreciate you coming. Him and I've had many conversations. And, you know, there's a couple of things that was concerning when you called me a few times. One of them was about the water meters.
Yes, yes.
And I've had some other residents call me about your pressure that's out there.
Yeah.
So we need to make sure that it's adequate for that whole trailer park.
The deal with that is, they shouldn't make any money on the water. And if we looked at what was going, what they paid and what they're getting into, I'm pretty sure there's a fluctuation there.
So that was one concerning issue. And then you also called me about the ab...
regarding waiving those temporarily at least, the permit fees for the repair, renovation, replacement of structures damaged during the floods this last year.
I'll move thirty-seven.
All right. Item's been moved. Any discussion?
Very good.
Seven, yes.
Item thirty-eight has been polled, the individual polled her item regarding CIP infrastructure work in a committee. Item thirty-nine is request from Matthew Gerhart's seventy-five-hundred Bloomfield Road Lot Two to speak regarding unfair housing, the privacy of trailer courts, and sidewalks for Bloomfield Road. Is Matthew here?
Yep.
Come on up, Matt.
Hello. Hi there, I'm Matthew Gerhart. You already said my address. I believe on Bloomfield Road, it runs from East Fourteenth to Tenor Road, and people walk on it every day and nightly, and I believe there should be sidewalks. Thanks to Joe Gatto, we got streetlights up from in front of my house to the east, and there's people walking, and there's a porch now that's really dark, and things got lights up. But we should worry about the sidewalks. People walking up and down the, you know, the street, they're walking on gravel, rocks, you know, whatsoever. Really don't get no attention out there. Also, I'd like to talk about, I live in a trailer court, and it's like we're on sovereign ground. Nobody could help us with the situation that we had, and whatever city entity, I didn't get any help. I'm sorry. But it just seems like we're being discriminated against. I mean, I heard people speak about equality in Des Moines, but there's not. And I'm sorry emotional, but that's all I would say.
Okay, Joe?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Matthew, I appreciate you coming. Him and I have had many conversations. And, you know, there's a couple of things that was concerning when you called me a few times. One of them was about the water meters.
Yes, yes.
And I've had some other residents call me about your pressure that's out there.
Yeah.
So we need to make sure that it's adequate for that whole trailer park.
The deal with that is, they shouldn't make any money on the water. And if we looked at what was going, what they paid and what they're getting into, I'm pretty sure there's a fluctuation there.
So that was one concerning issue. And then you also called me about the abandoned trailer.
Yeah.
That the air condition was running, and it was unbearable noise.
Yeah.
And you've called the manager every single day, and he tells you every single day that he's got it taken care of, and every day you're still dealing with the same problem.
Yeah, and I tried to get with every single city entity and, you know, legal aid and everybody, nobody could help me because they say I'm on private property. But I live in the city of Des Moines, pay taxes, I mean, buy stuff here in Des Moines, but it's like I'm not a resident.
So my thoughts was refer it back to your office and Joshua, the Civil and Human Services, and maybe work with Matthew and make sure that we're not having some unfair housing practices going on out there, that they're getting adequate services that the trailer park itself, the infrastructure needs to provide to them as residents and owners there.
Thank you.
It's concerning that, obviously, that that noise of that air condition, I can't imagine.
There was unbearable, we had to live in the front of our house and our living because.
It was horrible on the voicemail. So I would like to refer that back as my motion, and I appreciate you coming, talking about the sidewalks. That is one of our goals in prioritizing.
Yeah, I understand that. I've seen that around Des Moines.
Getting those, and tonight we're going to pass a plan to prioritize some of those sidewalk areas and work getting back into our neighborhoods and focusing on that and being able to get folks like you connected to the rest of the city. So I really appreciate you coming down and talking.
Thank you.
So you'll get back with Matthew, and Joshua will reach out to you, Joshua Barr.
Thank you.
So I appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Good work.
I will move item thirty-nine with those stipulations in there, Mr. Manager.
Okay, and receive and file and refer to the manager.
Yep, receive and file and refer back to the manager and your appropriate departments.
Good job.
Thank you.
Matthew, thanks for coming down.
Seven, yes.
All right, takes us to a request from Bridget Fagan, Rhineburn, Justin Lewis, Celeste Moore, Harvey Harrison, Herbert Williams, Lori Young, Laurel Clinton, Joe Henry, Mark Stringer, to speak on a proposed racial profiling ordinance. Appreciate all of you coming down this evening as we kind of open this up for discussion. How many folks are looking to speak this evening? So I'm seeing one, two, three, four, five.
Six.
Six.
Seven.
Seven.
Eight.
Eight. Okay.
I think there's some out of all, too.
All right. So, and we appreciate, I'm not sure that you're all down here for the same reason, but if you are, we appreciate your coming. What we would ask, given the rather lengthy list of people that have asked to request to speak on this issue, that we kind of make sure that all comments are new ideas and new, we are hopeful that we won't hear the same ideas multiple times. But we look forward to your input and to the city council and ideas that we can reflect on. And I will say that I know that I've seen many of you at our work with bridging the gap, which is an effort that Des Moines Civil Human Rights, our Des Moines Police Department, and this city council have taken quite seriously. And we've had literally over 500 people participate in it. And we hope that you'll continue to participate in that process as well, because we are quite excited about moving forward with it as we prioritize some of the things that this council is going to move forward with, hopefully to help support some of the things that Mr. Coleman read in our City of Compassion ordinance that reflects on all of our citizens today in moving forward and build a strong future for our city. So I guess I'll ask, is Bridget here?
I'm here, yeah.
If you're the first one on the list, step right up.
Justin's the first one. I just filled it out.
You filled it out, all right.
So, good morning, City Council. Bear with me one second, I want to get you guys some agendas in your hand.
All right. While you're doing that, could you give us your name and, you gave us Justin Lewis, but if you give us your address too, please, Justin.
Yep, and then it's going down the row. So, yeah, my name is, can I stand up straight? Can you?
Yeah.
So, my name is Justin Lewis. I am a member of Iowa CCI. I live in Ward One, Thirty-Nine Oh Seven, Tuana Drive, Five Oh Three One Zero, if you need everything.
Thanks.
So, yeah, I am a product of Des Moines, Iowa, born and raised, McKee Elementary, Hoyt Middle School, East High School, and a graduate of Iowa State, and will be attending Drake here in the spring. So, that's a little bit about me. As you may know, today we are here with members of the community to discuss issues of racial profiling and layout specific ways. We hope the city council can take action and end racial profiling here in Des Moines. We have eight speakers today, six of whom will lay out specific pieces of an ordinance. One person from LULAC, one person from the ACLU. We did have someone with the NAACP lined up, but due to them falling ill, we had to take them off the list. So, over the summer, we've had hundreds of Iowans participate in three community meetings, with some of you, city council members, Westergaard and Gray, thank you for attending a meeting, as well as Ms. Bozen and Mr. Western, no, wait, Ms. Bozen and Mr., no, Ms. Bozen and Mr. Manalbom, excuse me for my mistake, for participating in those other three meetings and listening and making some good, making some good suggestions for the community. I just want to let you know that I have experienced racial profiling multiple times here in Des Moines. I am not a gangster, I am not a thug, but I've had guns drawn on me. I've been pulled over for a simple taillight, and I've apologized for the taillight, and he said, "Carry your ass on," down the road. I did not file a complaint. This was back in 2012, when he told me to carry on. I had guns drawn on me as a high schooler. Again, we didn't file a complaint because usually it just gets filed away, nothing typically happens. I do respect the police, I'm not anti-cop. I have friends that are on the force who I pray for daily, for them to return to their families. So it's not an issue of me being anti-cop because I respect what they do and I honor their work. But I do believe that there's people hiding within the system who are not great representation of our community, and they shouldn't have those positions of power. And we should allow you guys to make it easier to get rid of those people so they're not costing us money, and they're not costing the trust of the community. I know for one, I'm tired of seeing the bad publicity that takes place in Des Moines, and we've seen payouts due to bad character and negligence on our police force. So again, I want to say I'm not anti-cop, but I do love my city, and I do want to lower the cost. So that's my thought there. I want it, if we also have seen, we have also seen that this is one of the best cities to live in, and it's inviting, but there's also a survey for people of color. It can be one of the most difficult. I would like to see that changed. I'm sure you guys are familiar with it. If not, I can get you guys that, those surveys and reviews as well. So, my proposal is that we ban racial profiling in Iowa. Iowa is one of twenty states that do not, that does not have racial profile, that does not make racial profiling illegally, illegal. We need to define racial profiling and prohibit law enforcement from racial profiling in our community. I want to thank you guys for your time and allow me to speak and stand in front of you guys and voice my concerns. Again, I appreciate what you guys do for our city, and I will hand it over to the next speaker.
Justin, thanks for coming down.
Good evening. I wrote it down so that I won't ramble. My name is Celeste Blakely-More. I live at fourteen fifty-eight Sixteenth Street. My grandparents lived at twelve twenty-eight Fifteenth Street. My father's parents lived on Fourteenth Street Place. I'm vested in my city. I've lived here most of my life. I chose to bring my sons back to Des Moines to raise them in nineteen ninety-two. I brought them back from the Bay Area because I thought it would be safer here. I was wrong. Again, I'm vested in my community and what happens to the people that I live around. I've become disheartened, disheartened with what's happening in my community, especially the treatment of African-American people. In 2000, I had a horrible interaction with a police officer of the Des Moines Police Department. I submitted a formal complaint and was told the encounter was wholly and solely my fault. I still to this day have flashbacks. It was horrendous. I was forty years old, had not had a ticket, not even spoken sideways to a policeman for anything. Today, when I have a cop pull up behind me, I catch myself holding my breath. I have license, I have insurance, my home is clean. Recently, my kids, which are thirty-one and twenty-eight now, started telling me some of the things that have happened to them when they were younger. Both of them witnessed the incident I had with the policeman, and neither one of them, because of it, have any trust in the police department. Some of the stuff that they told me, they've told me recently they wouldn't tell me then because they were afraid that I would pursue it and that we would get harassed because they were being harassed. One way people of color are stopped is by using pretextual stops. When police stop you for a taillight, the young man, or a cracked window, on that pretext to search for something else. Our second proposal is to ban pretextual stops. People of color are being disproportionately targeted. I say people of color, black people, brown people, and it needs to stop. I have grandchildren now, and I'm afraid for them, and they're babies, and I'm afraid for them. Thank you for your time, and I hope you, pardon me, I hope you listen to us from your heart because we're frightened.
Celeste, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening about the proposed ordinance to ban racial profiling in Des Moines. My name is Harvey Harrison. I live at six eighty Harwood Drive. I'm a member of CCI. For the past six years, I've been doing research about racial profiling in Des Moines, in the schools, the courts, and in the justice system, and particularly in the operation of the Des Moines Police Department. The third request being made today by CCI and the community is that you adopt in the ordinance that the Des Moines Police Department collect comprehensive data on all stops made by its officers and to make that information available to the public. That is not the case as we stand here tonight. Banning racial profiling is about taking a stand, a legal stand, against racial bias in our city. Collecting the comprehensive data on, about supporting this stand on transparency and accountability is what data collection is all about. This is among the primary recommendations that are contained in the Obama Administration Task Force report on Twenty-First Century Policing that was issued in 2015. It's also exactly what the United States Department of Justice called for in 2015 when it published implementation guidelines on those recommendations of the Obama Administration Task Force. It called for all police departments in the United States to review and update policies on data collection and to increase the transparency of data, policies, and procedures. And I believe that as a part of the materials that CCI either has given you or will, on the front page of that, there is a snapshot of the data collection status in Des Moines at this point, and you'll see that it indicates in any category that you want to, significant and terrible disproportionality against people of color. The collection of comprehensive data is one important step, and it's important not only for the general public to gain confidence and regain confidence in the Des Moines Police Department and its operations, but also in for the police department itself. Sam Walker, who is an expert in police accountability, says this about it, "Management today cannot effectively run a police department without systematic data on officer conduct, arrests, traffic stops, uses of force. The data needs to be detailed, including demographic data on the people who are arrested or stopped." And that is what is being requested as the third part of this request to the council tonight. When I talked about the data snapshot that you should have at this point, you should know that all of the data that's in that has not come from the Des Moines Police Department directly. They're unable to provide that information, including being unable to provide information on stops where no citation is issued or where a warning is issued. All of this information came from three other departments of the state, the DOT, the State Data Warehouse, and the Sheriff's Booking Records. And it was required in order to get that information over the past year that I submit requests to all three of those places. It is surprising to me now, and it was surprising to me when I learned this, that the Des Moines Police Department is not already collecting comprehensive data on every stop by their officers, regularly reviewing that information through the lens of racial bias, and then taking appropriate steps to hold officers who are engaged in racially biased policing accountable for their actions. It is up to you now, I guess, and the adoption of a ban on racial profiling, to include within that ordinance the data collection that is being requested as the third item in our request tonight. Next, you're going to hear from Herbert Williams, who's going to speak to you about citizen review.
Good evening. My name is Herbert Williams, and I live at twenty-two twenty-one Thirty-Fourth Street, Beaverdale.
Woo!
Okay, and the fourth proposal is create a citizens review board. And I've shared my story about being racially profiled on numerous occasions. CCI has helped me and other individuals file complaints with the Office of Professional Standards within and without the Des Moines Police Department, and they all came back unfounded. The process is more like an interrogation process, and it's also intimidating, and it's almost always comes back unfounded. Many people do not trust the current process. That's because we don't have a citizens review board. That's why our fourth proposal is to create a citizens review board so an independent body can review complaints of profiling and restore trust to the community, and their complaints will be heard fairly. Each person stopped by a police officer should be made aware of their right to file a complaint with the board, and the board shall review and investigate the complaint and be able to impose disciplinary measures if applicable. We hope that you will seriously consider this proposal, and let's all live in harmony. And I too, I am not anti-police. Matter of fact, I think like ninety percent of you all are great cops and great city officials, and I respect you, and let's just live in harmony.
Good evening. My name's Lori Young, and I am a citizen and lifelong resident of Des Moines, a graduate of Des Moines Tech High, a graduate of Grand View University. I am a member of Iowa CCI, and I'm the Secretary of their Board of Directors. I want to thank you again for hearing our ideas on this ordinance. We've been working on this, but I personally have been working.
Do you live in Des Moines?
Pardon me?
Do you live in Des Moines?
I live in Des Moines, yes. My address is twenty-seven oh seven High Street, Des Moines, Iowa.
I appreciate it, Lori. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. I forgot to mention my address. We've been working, I've been working on this since November 2014, after the shooting in Ferguson, Missouri. I joined with CCI on this issue because CCI is about empowering people and trying to improve our communities. I got involved as well because I have two sons, thirty-three and twenty-seven. I got involved as well because I have two sons, 33 and 27. One resides in Ankeny, one resides in Des Moines. But specifically this year, we've gone through three seasons working on this. We first approached you in April of this year. We had three community meetings over the summer. We thanked Councilman Mandelbaum and Bozen for attending all three meetings, and Councilwoman Westergaard attended one, as well as Bill Gray. But the point is, we've been working on this for months, and over those three summer meetings that we held, we had over 450 people, everyday people from all walks of life, all colors, rural, urban, black, white, young, old, come together and tried to come up with solutions. We personally spent about eight and a half hours in those three meetings. Some of us who lead the racial justice team at Iowa CCI have spent over 20 hours planning the meetings and debriefing the meetings. This feedback we're giving you tonight is what the community says they think are the solutions to end racial profiling. I will also add that I am not anti-police, I am not anti-cop. They have a very tough job, they protect us, and when I call 911, I want results. I want to get responses. They do important work, but we are absolutely not against police officers. But we also know that everyone has biases, and those biases can especially impact how people of color are treated, how they are perceived as being suspicious when we are just trying to live our lives. So our fifth proposal as part of this ordinance is annual implicit bias and de-escalation training, as well as training on the racial profiling ordinance that we hope you will pass, and how to properly collect data and report that data. We hope that you will support this proposal. Thank you.
My name is Laurel Clinton. I live at 1190 10th Street, Des Moines, Iowa. I am a city long-life, lifetime member, resident of Des Moines, Iowa. I have told you in previous council meetings that I have physically been in the presence of seven generations in my family. We're vested here, we're here. Since our meeting, I just want to say thank you to Connie and Josh for going the distance with the community. I actually got to ask you to come, and you actually showed up, and I appreciate all the hard work everybody put into that. I'm the mother of three sons. I'm a widow. I lost my husband six years ago. And unfortunately for me, I'm the guard at the gate. I have to tell my children how to act, not if, but when they're stopped by the police. It's just the way it is for them. My two older sons, within eight days, were racially profiled right here in the city of Des Moines. I'm sure you've seen the video of my son being pulled over and asked if he had a weapon, if he had marijuana. He hadn't either. My greatest fear was realized when they asked him if he had a gun. I heard the audio, I was terrified. It appears that officers are doing a stop-and-sniff, where they pull a car over, sniff it, smells like marijuana, they search, they go to the next level or escalate on citizens. I think the responsible thing for citizens to do is to show up and address these issues with the council, and we participated in three meetings over the summer. So there's a lot of people, you see in red, and can we just get a show of hands of people that are here to support these ordinances? So we're coming collectively to ask our city council to support these ordinances, and I get to address the sixth one. As it appears that officers do do these stops, they're looking for marijuana. It's a drug that many states have legalized. It's not a safety issue, and officers should be patrolling the streets for criminals and not marijuana. We know that marijuana stops disproportionately affect the black community, eight times. Eight times. That's phenomenal. That's out of control. That's unacceptable. So what we're asking is that they lower the priority for marijuana in a police stop. We're asking the city council to make the investigation, the arrest, the prosecution of marijuana offenses in the city of Des Moines the lowest enforcement as a priority. So I'm going to ask this before I hand the mic over to my pastor. If not now, when will we make this a priority? If not you, who do we look to to make this a priority? And I thank you and hope you all have a wonderful holiday. Thank you.
My name is Frederick Gaddy. I live at 3522 Iowa Avenue and I pastor St. Paul AME Church at 1201 Day Street, also in Des Moines. You've heard the six proposals that have been drafted by these concerned and committed citizens, and it is our request that you move forward with the drafting process of an amendment. But we also want to officially go on record as requesting from the council that you establish a working group to tackle the drafting process of the ordinance. We would like to see the working group to include community members, representatives from CCI, the NAACP, the ACLU, the LULAC, and other organizations you feel might make sense to be a part of this process. We also ask that you include a member of the Des Moines Civil and Human Rights Commission, city staff, and members of the council. And we also like the mayor and the city manager to appoint a person to run this working group. We also ask and we hope that you will share your thoughts on these proposals and clear timelines and next steps to pass an anti-racial profiling ordinance. At this time, we want to bring Joe Henry.
Hello, Joe Henry, 2463 East Highview Drive. I'm here as the president of the League of United Latin American Citizens, Council 307. Betty Andrews, the president of the NAACP for Iowa and Nebraska, also asked me to represent her organization. We stand together in coalition with CCI and other community members to support these proposals. We are ranked number 100 of the top cities in the United States. These initiatives have been adopted by 144 cities of the top 150. We're at 100 right now. With the citizen review board, this has been something that has been tackled by many of those cities, and all these issues have been addressed. So we ask you all to be a part of those other cities in our country that have taken on these issues. Community policing has been something that we have really worked very hard on, and when it comes to the citizen review board, that is part and partial of community policing, which again also tackles these other issues. So we ask for your support, we in the Latino community, and the African-American community, and the community members that are here. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. I have a question for Mr. Henry. Mr. Henry, do you serve on the Civil Service Commission?
I do.
You do?
Yes.
So to our legal department, are you going to recuse yourself when any officers come in front of you for any disciplinary action, since you are here as an activist and stood with CCI as suing the city of Des Moines?
You know, that is a good question. You know, I don't know how to answer that.
Well, that's okay, because I'll look to our legal department to give us a written opinion of something like that.
A written opinion?
But I think it's important to note, you know, with these issues that we're talking about tonight, you know, we're asking the city council to take these on, we're not condemning the police department. We know that the chief and many good police officers are in that department, but we need transparency, communication, we need to expand the discussion and make sure that we have accountability.
Yeah, we appreciate all the comments, and I appreciate you coming down as one of my constituents. I just want to make sure that as you're representing the city in a different variety that you're going to do on a monthly basis, we need to probably get that question answered. I appreciate you coming down.
When we look at, that's LULAC of Iowa, and I represent LULAC Council 307.
I understand what you represent, thank you.
Can I be clear too about CCI? CCI is not named in the lawsuit, so we are not a part of that lawsuit, just to be clear.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Mark Stringer. I'm the executive director of the ACLU of Iowa, and we at the ACLU join with our partners, including Iowa CCI, Iowa and Nebraska NAACP, and LULAC, and calling on the council to pass a meaningful ordinance to address a critical issue, and that is racial profiling in Des Moines. Racial profiling and pretextual stops, as you've heard, alienate communities that the police are supposed to serve. They violate the rights and freedoms of Des Moines residents, and they don't make our communities safer, council members. You can change that, and we are calling on you to change that. Clearly, now is the time for reform. Racial profiling has no place in our city. We call on the council to pass an ordinance that bans racial profiling in Des Moines. Pretextual stops are just what they sound like, the traffic stop that the officer says they make for one reason, like a minor traffic or vehicle equipment violation, but that is made on a pretext, because they actually make the stop for a different reason. That would not provide a lawful basis to make the stop under the Constitution, like finding the driver's race or location, sex, car or record suspicious. Pretextual stops are not only unfair, they have driven system-wide racial disparities on the basis of race. They are inherently dishonest, and for people of color, we've seen too many times, they are dangerous. For every police encounter that results in injury or death, there are thousands more that don't, but those stops still lead to fear and distrust in police. So we call for an ordinance that ends pretextual stops in Des Moines. We deserve a more complete picture of policing in Des Moines, so we call for an ordinance that mandates data collection and analysis of police stops, including collecting race data for all stops, not just for arrests or citations. And we will all benefit from accountability and transparency in this city, so we call for an ordinance that creates a citizen review board. We know that racial profiling doesn't only refer to intentional and deliberate racial profiling, but more often than not is about what's called implicit racial bias. That's bias that leads officers to be more likely to perceive a black driver as involved in drug or gang activity than a white one. Des Moines can and should address this ongoing challenge, so we call for an ordinance that mandates annual training for police on implicit bias and de-escalation techniques, and as you've heard, we also call for an ordinance that makes marijuana possession the lowest law enforcement priority of the Des Moines Police Department. It kind of falls upon me to summarize what you've heard, and I've just done that, but the bottom line is, we all want to be safe in our communities and anywhere when we are in Des Moines. Council members, we call on you as our representatives to help us and to ensure that any process you put in place to move us toward the meaningful ordinance we've called for tonight be conducted in a timely fashion and with citizen input. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Terry Wells, and I reside at 1157 14th Place in the 1-4 here in Des Moines, Iowa. Now, you all know I'm pro-community, but I'm also pro-police, because we do need safety and protection. The one thing I want to throw out before I get into all this is, when you have listened to the community before, example, Urban Ambassadors in our parks, it's been a success. So tonight, the perception of concerned citizenry, we've already had people raise their hands here, but there's another 30 people out here in the hallway that you can't see. I'd love to bring them all in, if possible, and fill this area. But the point is, the perception in the community is this is happening way too much, and it's hurting our citizens in Des Moines.
They're on a delay. They got a little delay going on.
I don't know what's going on behind me, I'm deaf, y'all know that, so you guys are going to have to be louder, but when somebody hurts my people, I'm going to come here and ask for your leadership. And so, I'm going to come from a different point of view than you've heard with the suggestions of all these great ideas from the community, but I'm going to beg for your leadership in this city. I respect each and every one of you. I've worked with most of you on some type of project or something in our communities. You all can take the lead in this state. Now, you're probably wondering, how can the city council of Des Moines take the lead in the state? Well, let me quickly break this down, because I know we don't have a lot of time. Not only have all these other organizations worked on this, but Amos and the University of Iowa have been doing studies for 20 or 30 years on disproportionate minority confinement. We know that there are five counties that are heavily, heavily locking up black and brown people and hurting their families on minor offenses, just, again, dealing with racial profiling. Woodbury, Polk, Johnson, Blackhawk, and Scott. We have all the data, so we know that it's happening. Now, a great representative from Urbandale, Brad Zahn, also brought a Senate bill. It's number 1177, and it came out of the Judiciary Committee. Now, last year, it didn't quite make it all the way through, and so again, I'm going to ask for my city council leaders to push. If you all can make this a priority tonight and help your citizenry, it's going to have statewide impact, because this is not just a Des Moines problem. This is a West Des Moines, this is an Ankeny, this is an Urbandale, this is a Pleasant Hill, this is an Iowa City problem, this is a Sioux City problem. But with your voices tonight about a racial profiling ordinance, you can put the stamp that our city isn't going to tolerate this anymore. Because we are the largest urban area, we should have the largest voice on all of this, on disproportionate minority confinement, on racial profiling. You've seen how, when the community steps forward, the last time I seen the council like this in red and the hallway full was when we tried to put the shelter down on KEO. And you all made the right decision that time, and I'm begging for your leadership again tonight to make the right decision for our people. Our city is a diverse mix of every race, every color, every creed, every age, and it's hurting not only their pocketbooks, it's hurting housing, it's hurting the image of the city. I mean, we see it all the time in national news, how Iowa either leads or third in the nation in this bad stat, and that African-Americans in Des Moines are not getting a fair shake. So it's time for the leadership to step up and help out the people. So I ask you to dig deep in your hearts tonight. Look at the statistics, look at the faces, look at the time that's been put in, and we're not saying it's a Des Moines police problem, it's a community-wide problem. It's happening all over the county. We need to get the County Board of Supervisors on board, because we see things outside of our city limits, so we don't want to just say, "Des Moines, Des Moines, Des Moines, Des Moines." It's all of Polk County. But what I'm going to say is, you all can be the leaders and can swing this pendulum and tell the other cities, this is what we're going to do, can you follow us? And then we can continue to get people like Brad Zahn and Akio and Ruth Ann Gaines up in the State House to get a statewide law. Now, earlier I heard 20 states, but I did some research, and we're one of 12 or 13 states that has no racial profiling laws statewide. Do we want to be in that minority? Do we want to keep having those conversations? This is Iowa where everybody loves each other, we take care of each other, so again, I ask you to -- ask for your leadership to take an action and get this thing rolling, and you can impact our whole state.
Mr. Manager, I think that it would probably be appropriate to receive and file, and by the way, we did have one document passed to us that if we could get
Yes, I'll move to receive and file the document presented.
Yeah, right, on paper.
As part of our record.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Of course, thank you. Document is received, and, Mr. Manager, I think that what we want to do is forward this in light of the other work that is in process and see if we can merge a lot of these efforts and take a look and get sort of a comment back from you and the appropriate departments, how we might handle each of these recommendations and do it hopefully in the short term. Josh?
Well, I wouldn't mind making a few comments if I could. You know, first of all, I want to thank everyone who came to speak tonight and everyone else who came to show their support and to listen to this conversation. I've had the opportunity to be part of multiple conversations over several months. You know, a number of you were here back in April, and you asked us to come and listen. And to me, that's one of the most important jobs that all of us up here at this table have, is to listen to the public that we're trying to serve. And I think if we listen, and we learn, and we act, we can make our community work better for everyone. And I've had the opportunity to think and reflect on a lot of these issues over time, and I don't know that I have all the answers, but I do want to try and put some of this conversation in context, in a couple of ways, because that context gives me maybe a greater sense of purpose or, you know, urgency. You know, one, our community seems to be experiencing an uptick in hate and intolerance in the last few months. I think about this because, you know, late this summer, there was an incident of anti-immigrant graffiti on the South Side. There were anti-Semitic flyers left at several institutions in our community. And recently, there have been multiple incidents on the Drake campus. Now, I don't think any of these incidents reflect our community or our values or who we are, and I think whoever committed these acts was afraid to do so openly because they know they don't speak for our community. But that doesn't change the need for all of us to speak up, to speak out, and to let our community know, everyone in our community know, that we see them and we hear them and we welcome them. And that's part of what this conversation is about, too. There are a lot of people here who are talking about the experience that they have in our And then, another piece of, I think, really important context is, this conversation comes in the midst of more and more examples of racial bias, not just in our community but nationally. And I think about it a lot. I mean, I think about, you know, what happens in a Starbucks in Philadelphia, or the actions of a Stanford professor at a park in Oakland. This weekend, I was reading about a frozen yogurt shop in Seattle, and then, obviously, more locally, we saw what happened in West Des Moines when someone was canvassing just before the election. Now, all of these, these are incidents of, or examples of how bias just sort of creeps in there. And one of the other things that all of those particular examples, although there are many incidents of bias, those are examples of how others' bias oftentimes bring in, we are asking our police to be the ones to take care of other people's bias, too, which, to me, is an interesting thing to think about in this larger context. But what it tells us is, as a society, we've got some grappling to do with racial bias. And nobody, nobody in our society is immune. Nobody sitting up here, nobody in our audience, and none of our other city employees. Now, I know this conversation is happening in the context specifically of policing and our police department, and I do want to take a moment to address that, too. You know, I think we have a tremendous police force. You know, I've had the opportunity to ride along with officers, to walk with officers as they're doing their job, to see them at neighborhood meetings, to work with them, to follow up on constituent concerns about what's going on in their neighborhood or in their community to solve problems. I've seen them at the Summer City Hoop Series and other public events. I know that we have a lot of men and women who are incredibly dedicated, who care deeply about our community, deeply about the people who work in our community, and keeping everyone in our community safe. I also think that our officers have one of the, if not the, hardest and most difficult jobs in public service. Our officers regularly deal with dangerous and stressful situations, and their jobs have only gotten more difficult over the years. Some of that is as we fail to adequately deal with issues like mental health or the proliferation of guns, and I know both of those conversations are for separate time, but they also have their place. And when we fail to deal with something as society, as policymakers, our officers often have no choice but to deal with the consequences. So what I would like, well, so I say that in appreciating the role that our officers play and the tremendous respect that I have for what they do. But one of the things where a couple of these items converge, we do need to acknowledge that no institution or no group is perfect. And when there are bad actors, we need to recognize it and address it. And we also need to grapple with bias. Everyone needs to grapple with bias, and that includes our police department. And our conversation tonight, like I said, is the convergence of a number of these things. And I do think we owe it to our citizens to listen and engage and to act upon what we've heard. And that's one of the things that I've been committed to doing. I committed back in April. I think folks at every step of the way have asked me to affirm that, and I'll do that again tonight. I want to be a little more specific in the direction that I'd like to ask from the manager. And I'd like to move that ultimately, we look at taking proactive steps, but I'd like the manager to come up with a report back to us that addresses each of the items that folks have raised and what we can do. And I'd like that report, I know we're coming up on the holiday season, and there's a lot to digest in there, so I hope that we can do this by late January or early February at the latest. And I also want to just share some of what I hope, because I think this is at least what the folks in this room are hoping for, it's the beginning of a process, not the endpoint of a process. And I'd like to share at least a little of what I hope we can accomplish. You know, one, I hope that this process helps us proclaim and articulate our common values. I think that we can all agree that we are all against racial profiling, and our department right now has an anti-profiling or anti-bias policy. I hope that we can come together and figure out a way to put our current policy into an anti-profiling ordinance. Two, I hope that we, this process allows us to invest in continuous improvement in our policing and in our city service. And by that, I think we should be looking at what we're doing on implicit bias training and de-escalation training. I hope that we look at implicit bias training not just for our department, but for all areas where we interface with the public. And one of the things that I've learned in this process is, I've learned a little bit about what we currently do as a department. And I know that our department provides 32 hours of implicit bias training as part of the Police Academy, and that we've had, since we've started that, four classes that have gone through that, which represents a good chunk of, a good chunk of the department that's received that, what sounds like comprehensive training, and what I think the Regional Department of Justice Office has actually started using or is looking at using as a model or template for other departments around the region. So that, to me, is a good start. I also know that we have additional training as part of in-service refreshers. I'd like us to think about ways to expand this training so that everyone in the department has received those 32 hours and that we continue the regular in-service. I'd also like us to think about, as officers transitioning to supervisory roles, what can we do to continue to emphasize the importance of implicit bias training and de-escalation The de-escalation piece, I hope the report will specifically address that. I know that there are several different pieces of de-escalation training in current practice that includes tactical speech, it includes defensive tactics. I'd like to look at what are best practices, and are there things that are considered national best practices that we are not doing that we could be doing? I'd like this process, at the end of it, Des Moines, to be a leader in implicit bias and de-escalation training. I think that's something that we can do. I think that improves policing, it improves our service, and it will improve trust and confidence in the community. I also want this process to help us become more transparent. You know, we have the ability to effectively collect data and to use that data to inform our practices as a city. And we should be doing that across the enterprise. You know, that is just something that I think, as a governance model, we should be using data-driven practices. And this is, this area is no different. And from conversations with the manager and the chief, my understanding is, we have a bit of a unique opportunity right now, because in the near future, we're gonna be looking at a new records management system. And that will help us think about what data we need, how we collect it, a whole host of, a whole host of things, and addressing these things upfront, and at times like this presents a real opportunity. So my hope is that on some of these data issues, we will provide opportunities for the public to engage and help shape what a new records management system looks like and what things we should be collecting and what things should be public. And I also understand that there are pieces of this that, you know, there might be opportunities in working with the Iowa Department of Transportation where some of this idea of collecting race with stops, you know, that's a challenging issue, but if you have that as a component of data that's in a driver's license, that can go a long way to collecting that information. And that might be something where, if it's not something that we can do directly as a city, we can help advocate for that type of policy as a state and where we can help be part of the solution. And so, I hope that's addressed in this report as well. And then, finally, I hope that this process allows us to help lead on policy changes. And one of the, in my mind, one of the most important policy changes is how we treat low-level drug possession, and the recommendation to make possession of marijuana one of the lowest enforcement priorities. I mean, I think we know that that often can be a person's introduction to the criminal justice system, and that there are racially disparate impacts in arrests and incarcerations. And that's despite the fact that we know that the prevalence particularly of marijuana use is pretty similar across racial lines. So I hope we get data on, as part of this, marijuana arrests in particular, so we get the data locally, and then we can start looking at how we change our policy locally and help start a conversation on this throughout the state. So with that, I'd move that we ask the manager to
Okay, you want to withdraw the motion that we've all been voting on, and you want to restate one? Is that what you want to do?
I don't know that there's any motion
Well, there's votes that are already on the board here, so
I think mine was from before.
So what do you have?
I think mine might have been from the other one where it said voting in progress, so mine's up there.
Yeah, I just want to, sure, if it's, I just want to make sure that a specific report is captured. I thought there was maybe a vote on receive and file. I want to make sure we receive and file all the comments, and I also want to make sure that we ask the manager for a specific report to come back to us, addressing all six of the items that were presented to us, and information, and a process for moving forward. And the things that I shared are things that I hope come out of that, but that is the motion that I would make.
Okay, we have a new motion, so let's clear the board, if you will, on the old one.
I guess so.
And Councilmember Mantlebaum put up a motion that is fairly detailed, but I think specifically it is to address those six items that were out there, plus some of the other comments that were put in as well. And as I suggested earlier on, Mr. Manager, I think that we look at the other recommendations that have come out of the other community discussions that we've had regarding bridging the gap, which I know a number of these people have participated in, because I think we've got a lot of valuable community input that's been discussed that I think we can move forward and make a real needed impact, and respect the input of all the citizens that have been part of these various discussions. And again, to echo what's been said by so many of us, I want to thank each and every one of you for coming down and participating, not only tonight, but in whatever discussions that have brought you here to show us that you care about the future of this city, and that all of us as citizens, whether we're the elected body sitting up here or you sitting in your homes, either in tonight, in City Council tonight, or those watching TV knowing that we're all in this together, this is all about the future of this city. It's not only for those of us sitting here, but it's for future generations moving forward. So let's move forward. You've got more comments?
Yes, I wanted to add, first of all, Yes, I wanted to add, first of all, I'm not, Josh covered everything. I do appreciate being invited. I know that you can only have a limited amount of City Councilmen coming to the meetings, so I appreciate everybody's-
Well, they were public meetings, so I would guess any citizen could probably have attended, although some were not invited. Go ahead.
Anyway, I do appreciate all the time everyone's put in and the comments because I thought it's been very thoughtfully done. And I appreciate the concerns that have been brought up. I just wanted to bring up one other thing that I heard was the process of even filing the complaint. If you could look into maybe the location and some of that stuff, if we could add that to, to it, too, because when you go in to file the initial complaint, there's concerns of how it's being done, of where it's at more so. It's a little intimidating, and I think we need to make sure that it's a very open process and people feel comfortable. So I would like to add that to it also.
Josh, do you want to add to your-
Sure.
Comments? Motion, I guess?
Yep, that can be part of the report back.
Right, just part of the report.
Does anybody else want to say anything? Ms. Coleman, anybody?
Thank you, everybody, for coming down.
Right.
Appreciate it. Thank you for all of your comments.
All right, voting's in process. Thank you all again. Appreciate it.
Seven yes.
Let's take a quick five-minute break as they clear the hall, and then we'll move to the, to the hearing items, which, for those that are interested, we'll start with item 44. Let's take a quick five-minute break as they clear the hall, and then we'll move to the, to the hearing items, which, for those that are interested, we'll start with item 44. That concludes the hearing. All right, voting's in process. Thank you all again. Appreciate it. Let's take a quick five-minute break as they clear the hall, and then we'll move to the, to the hearing items, which, for those that are interested, we'll start with item 44. That concludes the hearings at 6:02. That'll take us back to item 41. Item 41 is approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, designating the lowest responsible bidder as Jasper Construction Services, Inc., Cliff Rhodes President, $3,339,059. Council Communication Number 18-611A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. We'll open this hearing and see if there's anyone here to speak on items around 2900 Easter Lake Drive. Item B. Item C is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and D is the final consideration of the ordinance above, and that particular waiver also requires six votes. Let's open the hearing and see if there's anyone here to speak on items around 2900 Easter Lake Drive.
Mr. Mayor, I see none. This is already being used as, as what it's asking to be used for. I don't see any problems with this. I will move 44A, B, C, and D.
Okay.
Is this 44?
It is.
Yep, A, B, C, and D.
Seven yes.
Item 45, on a vacation of portions of East Fourth Street, Des Moines Street, East Fifth Street, right-of-way adjoining 415 and 421 Des Moines Street, in conveyance of a permanent easement for subsurface building encroachment on city-owned property to 555 East Fourth Parking LLC, $13,830. A is a first consideration of the ordinance above. We'll open the hearing on this item, again, areas around East Fourth and Des Moines Streets. Anyone here to speak to this item?
Mr. Mayor, I see none. I'll move 45A, and I will waive the second and third reading if no one objects. Save Alexander from coming back.
Seven yes.
Two more times.
He loves him.
He's getting paid. He's okay.
I know. Go do something else.
Item 46, on a vacation of segments of Locust Street and East West Alley, right-of-way adjoining 1416 Locust Street, in conveyance of a permanent easement for building encroachment, door swing to Saga Communications of Iowa LLC, doing business as Des Moines Radio Group, for $1,320. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and we'll go ahead and open the hearing on this item. Anyone here to speak to this?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move item 46A, and I'll move to waive the second and third readings as well.
All right, and we'll close the hearing, I guess, too.
Seven yes.
Item 47, on Riverview Park improvements, reject all bids and close the hearing on the plan specifications, form of contract documents, and engineer's estimate, Council Communication Number 18-619A is approving the contract and the bond. We'll open this hearing and see if there's anyone here to speak to 2019 roadway construction program. Anyone?
I see none, Mr. Mayor. This is a long time coming, and I will move 48 and 48A.
All right, we'll close the hearing. Any comments, anybody?
I'm going to Alexander. I'm leaving tonight.
All right, we're going to call a meeting back to order and reconvene. Let's note that it's 5:54. We're going to move to our first hearing item, and that's item 44. This is item regarding 2900 Easter Lake Drive. A is to amend the existing Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow plan, future land use designation from low-density residential to neighborhood mixed use. B is a hearing on the request from Boyer &amp; Boyer LLC to rezone 2900 Easter Lake Drive from R190 large lot, one-family residential to limited C1 neighborhood retail commercial to allow conversion of an existing church to a daycare center. There are six affirmative votes that are required for approval of this, item B. Item C is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and D is the final consideration of the ordinance above, and that particular waiver also requires six votes. Let's open the hearing and see if there's anyone here to speak on items around 2900 Easter Lake Drive.
Mr. Mayor, I see none. This is already being used as, as what it's asking to be used for. I don't see any problems with this. I will move 44A, B, C, and D.
Okay.
Is this 44?
It is.
Yep, A, B, C, and D.
Seven yes.
Item 45, on a vacation of portions of East Fourth Street, Des Moines Street, East Fifth Street, right-of-way adjoining 415 and 421 Des Moines Street, in conveyance of a permanent easement for subsurface building encroachment on city-owned property to 555 East Fourth Parking LLC, $13,830. A is a first consideration of the ordinance above. We'll open the hearing on this item, again, areas around East Fourth and Des Moines Streets. Anyone here to speak to this item?
Mr. Mayor, I see none. I'll move 45A, and I will waive the second and third reading if no one objects. Save Alexander from coming back.
Seven yes.
Two more times.
He loves him.
He's getting paid. He's okay.
I know. Go do something else.
Item 46, on a vacation of segments of Locust Street and East West Alley, right-of-way adjoining 1416 Locust Street, in conveyance of a permanent easement for subsurface building encroachment on city-owned property to 555 East Fourth Parking LLC, $13,830. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. We'll open the hearing on this item, again, areas around East Fourth and Des Moines Streets. Anyone here to speak to this item?
Mr. Mayor, I see none. I'll move 45A, and I will waive the second and third reading if no one objects. Save Alexander from coming back.
Seven yes.
Two more times.
He loves him.
He's getting paid. He's okay.
I know. Go do something else.
Item 46, on a vacation of segments of Locust Street and East West Alley, right-of-way adjoining 1416 Locust Street, in conveyance of a permanent easement for building encroachment, door swing to Saga Communications of Iowa LLC, doing business as Des Moines Radio Group, for $1,320. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and we'll go ahead and open the hearing on this item. Anyone here to speak to this?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move item 46A, and I'll move to waive the second and third readings as well.
All right, and we'll close the hearing, I guess, too.
Seven yes.
Item 47, on Riverview Park improvements, reject all bids and close the hearing on the plan specifications, form of contract documents, and engineer's estimate, Council Communication Number 18-619A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. We'll open this hearing and see if there's anyone here to speak to 2019 roadway construction program. Anyone?
I see none, Mr. Mayor. This is a long time coming, and I will move 48 and 48A.
All right, we'll close the hearing. Any comments, anybody?
I'm going to make a lot of people happy by doing this.
Seven yes.
Not probably next year, but after that, when the roads are closed.
People don't like it when the roads are closed to get fixed.
Yeah.
Item 49, on a Principal Park outfield deck improvements, a resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, designating the lowest responsible bidder is Minchurn, Inc., Cliff M. Rhodes President, $167,400. Council Communication Number 18-618A is approving the contract and the bond. We'll open the hearing on this. Again, this is some Principal Park outfield deck improvements. Anyone here to speak to this item?
I understand this will get the Cubs back in the World Series. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Eventually.
All right, then.
I'll move 49 and 49A.
All right, close the hearing. Any comments, anybody?
Seven yes.
All right, item 50 is cancellation of a hearing on a proposed connection fee ordinance and withdrawal of a proposed ordinance for Little Four Mile Trunk Sewer System, benefited District. A continuation of a hearing of Little Four Mile Trunk Sewer, approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, to December 17th of 2018, Council Communication Number 18-614. Mr. Manager, you want to, we are just canceling the hearing on this in total?
Yeah, canceling the hearing as written, and we will bring it back with some minor changes and start the process of the connection fee district over again.
On December 17th. Is that correct?
The portion-
Not necessarily.
The portion A is for the construction, and we need to continue that.
All right, so we're going to cancel the whole thing and we're going to continue A as a separate motion. Okay. All right, hopefully that's perfectly clear to everybody in the audience who wanted to, has waited all this time to speak. We'll ask if anybody wants to speak and open the hearing. Seeing none, let's close the hearing.
I will move item 50. Seven yes.
All right, that concludes the hearings at 6:02. That'll take us back to item 41. Item 41 is approving items regarding the Move DSM Transportation Master Plan. A is approving the amendment to the complete street's policy to reflect the goals and policies of Move DSM Transportation Master Plan, Council Communication Number 18-622. B has been struck and, which is the Move DSM Transportation Plan and the Connect Downtown element. C is approving the Move DSM Transportation Master Plan and adopting the plan as an element of an amendment to the Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan, Council Communication Number 18-621. And as we ask for comments, Mr. Manager, I hope that we can continue to have open discussions with all the necessary parties on continuing with our work on the Connect Downtown, and hopefully we can reach some resolution in the, in the near future of how we're going to move that. That's certainly an important piece of what we've been working on here.
Yeah, if I could, Mayor, I can continue that and say that, yes, the intent is to bring back the Connect Downtown. The request is for more conversations with the private entities downtown that are most impacted, making sure that we are 100% transparent in what those changes and intent are throughout the downtown. So we will have that communication with them, including the council, and then hopefully very quickly thereafter, bring back the Connect Downtown plan as shown. I would like to say that the changes to the Move DSM have been shared with you. There's been a letter that's been added on the front end of that, and that, I believe, was the focal point for a lot of the requests of the council, understanding that the Move DSM is a plan that has process within it. It has a vision of how to proceed with all modes of transportation. The priorities are in there, and I believe council supports those. Neighborhood efforts with sidewalks is one of many that were shared throughout those conversations.[1700.59]
communication number eighteen dash six twenty-one. And as we ask for comments, Mr. Manager, I hope that we can continue to have open discussions with all the necessary parties on continuing with our work on the Connect Downtown, and hopefully, we can reach some resolution in the near future as how we're going to move that. That's certainly an important piece of what we've been working on here.
Yeah, if I could, Mayor, I can continue that and say that, yes, the intent is to bring back the Connect Downtown. The request is for more conversations with the private entities downtown that are most impacted, making sure that we are 100% transparent in what those changes and intent are throughout the downtown. So, we will have that communication with them, including the council, and then hopefully, very quickly thereafter, bring back the Connect Downtown plan as shown. I would like to say that the changes to the Move DSM have been shared with you. There's been a letter that's been added on the front end of that, and that, I believe, was the focal point for a lot of the requests of the council, understanding that the Move DSM is a plan that has process within it. It has a vision of how to proceed with all modes of transportation. The priorities are in there, and I believe council supports those. Neighborhood efforts with sidewalks is one of many that were shared throughout those conversations. But, we do need to bring back to you what those individual policies, not only to connect downtown, but to get a little more guidance from the council on sidewalks and a couple of the other elements that were referenced in Move DSM as items that would come back to you with more discussion. There, within the processes outlined within Move DSM, there is plenty of opportunity intentionally for the council to do a check, if you will, and correction and any guidance that needs to be given. Changes to the plan are expected. This is a living document. It's meant to be a living document that could have changes as the political situation changes, as our budgetary situation changes over time. So, those opportunities are in the processes very purposefully and intently. One of the other changes that has been recommended is a simple one, for instance, a change to the Transportation Safety Committee. Simply, the title of that is more comprehensive than just safety, in that maybe that should be the Transportation Committee, more comprehensive and widespread in its responsibilities. That can also be brought back to you with this motion if it's so desired. That would take some ordinance changes that we would need to bring forward, just because of its reference with the name. So, that can also be included in the motion if so desired by the council. With that, we have staff here that can answer questions. This is an opportunity, again, for everything dealing with transportation to be referenced in one document. That was always the intent, and so as we add pieces to this, it only makes the document and makes our vision that much better.
Ms. Coleman?
I have a couple clarifying questions.
Absolutely.
So, I think I've been one of the people that have talked to you about the importance of sidewalks, but also trying to get comfortable with what the ADA rules are, you know, in terms of, you know, a wider sidewalk every 200 feet for passing lanes, that kind of thing. I want to make sure that we do all that. I don't want to back away from that. But, the, if we tightly define or better define what that policy is, I've asked, for instance, and haven't got a good answer, because I don't think there's a good answer right now. I'm not, I just don't think there is. We cite people all the time to replace three, four, six feet of sidewalk, often on sidewalks like the one in front of my house, which is three, three-and-a-half feet wide. You know, do those inserted sections have to be five feet when the rest of the sidewalk is only three feet wide? Or will we now force everybody to redo their whole sidewalk if they only have one crack in it? Those are questions, I think, as we go through this that have to be answered. So, my question is, once we more closely define that, do we have to amend the plan right away? Or are we passing a plan that is ambiguous on that subject so that we can define it later?
I would categorize that as we need to define that later and add to the document. And I would not be shy about amending this to add in more policy where we can get a consensus from the council. So, your specific question can be part of that policy.
Yeah, I'm happy that we have a longer time to talk about sidewalks, because A, it's really important, B, I don't think that we want to go so far overboard that the community revolts and that we just back away from improving sidewalks. You know, I think we have to do it so that we really help people. The second question I have is the letter that you referenced. When we, for instance, we're going to print and have available this plan, we're going to go back to it over years and decades, will your letter be part of that plan, or is it separate from the plan? I'd like to see it part of the plan.
No, we can make it part of the plan.
Okay.
Absolutely. Keep it within the plan as it gets amended.
Okay. I know that we have some speakers here, so I don't want to make a motion or say anything more until they speak. I just wanted...
All right, let's go ahead and ask, is there anybody here that would like to speak to this item? And if so, we'd ask you to step up to the south side of the council chambers here, so we know who all wants to speak. Chris, would you like to? Yeah.
Hello, city councilmen and women. Thank you for letting me speak on behalf of this, whatever, I can't think of it, sorry, Chris.
Move DSM.
Yes, Move DSM.
Chris?
I have been a resident on the south side, 6220 Southeast Second here in Des Moines. Over the years, I've had to struggle trying to get on smoother sidewalks and safer, and it's just the sidewalks aren't safe. I realized that on my old residence before I moved to my current residence, 103 Southeast Rose, Des Moines, we got a sidewalk for me to get into the closest dart, so I could go on the, or the dart to go to school and work. But, since like when winter's coming, it's hard for me to get to the closest dart, so I would have to either call paratransit or find a ride, and that's hard to find during short periods of time. So, I think for me, it's critical that the sidewalks be smooth and easy to access. That's just personal for me. I've been in a wheelchair my entire life, and wheelchair is the only access for me through Des Moines, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, my name's Don Corrigan. I reside at 3316 Tuana Drive in Des Moines. I am also the co-chair of Age Friendly Des Moines Infrastructure Committee. To make the city age-friendly, we do need the sidewalks. We do need to reduce traffic. Most of all, we have to make Des Moines safe. I used to work downtown. Downtown has changed tremendously since I worked downtown.
Where'd you work, sir?
I worked both in City Hall, the Armory Building, and the old Park West Building. So, I'm very familiar with this area, and it's changed so much. I'm also an avid walker, and it's nice to see people out walking in the east side of Des Moines. It used to be they only came down to look at used cars. Now, we have people all the time. We did the rock-the-block thing up on East Sixth and Grand. It was nice to see people there. People came and talked to us. They were excited about that project. They're excited about downtown Des Moines, and let's keep them excited, and let's keep them safe.
Don, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you all for coming down and speaking this evening. Any motions on comments either by the manager or certainly on our...
I'd move it, and my only comment on top of everything else is, going back to the time that the MPO took up the Tomorrow Plan, it was a point in time the mayor had some pretty good contacts in Washington, DC. I think a lot of those people moved away. But, we received a $2 million grant, and we called it locally the Tomorrow Plan. I was chair of the MPO during that time and spent a lot of time at it, and I think the first line of this report kind of references the Tomorrow Plan. To me, people like Matty demonstrate why this is important and that we're a citizen, we're a group of citizens that move and get around town a lot differently, and those are the reasons that I support it. I think there's been some criticism of the plan because of, oh, you know, maybe some people heard a lot from the bike community and thought it was all about bikes, or somebody thought it was all about downtown and Connect Downtown. But, I think if you read the overall plan and you see that this is kind of a vision for how we want to move forward, I think the citizens will be really proud that we have this plan on the books. I, you know, saying that, I do appreciate the manager's point that every project is a little bit different, and we apply these guidelines and this vision to it. And between the application on that particular project and what our budget is and what the neighborhood feels, every project will look a little bit different. We don't want a community that's a cookie cutter in every intersection to look the same, and, you know, for that reason, this plan can change over time as well. But, to me, it's really good. And when I had the chance to meet Matty, and it was just, we traded messages last week, but met this week and the last weekend, she is somebody that deserves the commitment of the council and us to think about our transportation system differently.
Thanks to Matty.
Absolutely. She's my favorite constituent.
I'd like to make some comments, but I think we maybe have another member of the public who just walked in who wants to...
You timed that perfect.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Larry James, 11430th in Des Moines. Apologize, I just got out of a piano recital, so that's...
How'd you do?
Well, I did okay. Did okay tonight. I still have a lot of work to do, though, but, so, thank you for allowing me a couple seconds here to talk. I'm a member of the Move DSM Task Force, along with Councilman Pullman, Mayor of County, and also co-chair of the Connect Downtown Plan. First, I'd like to urge you to pass the plan. Thank you for your work on this, and it's very exciting. I think it's a real good step forward for a city. Took a lot of work with a lot of people, and, you know, one of the things that I want to make sure that people understand is, city staff has been amazing this whole process. Engineering, traffic transportation, every step of the way. I mean, they're already overburdened with stuff, and they're working really, really hard, and I really appreciate all the work they've done on this. They've also done a lot of work. You know, we kind of stood arm-in-arm on the Connect Downtown Plan. City of Des Moines, Urban Land Institute of Iowa, and the Greater Des Moines Partnership worked on the plan together. So, it's, the city funded it, along with some of the money from ULI and some of the money from, from Greater Des Moines Partnership. And I'm asking, I was surprised that the item was pulled today. I thought that we'd already been down this road several times, and we've presented it to council about a year ago. It was received and filed about a year ago. We've had dozens, if not hundreds, of meetings with the public, with individual business owners, with the corporate community, neighborhood associations. And I'm asking the council to, although you're not taking this up tonight, I understand that, that you move as quickly as possible to have this adopted. Because while some couch this as a downtown plan, I want to remind you that this plan...
If you could put the thing up here. Is there some way you could put it up on the...
Sorry. This plan encompasses not just the core of downtown, but Sherman Hill, it's Cheetum Park, Good Park, Capital East, it's, but, Capital Park, there is the East Village, MLK, Junior Neighborhood over there. So, this is a plan that impacts the whole core of the city, and for us not to adopt it tonight, it's council's prerogative, I ask that we not wait too long, because every one of these red dots represents an accident. There were, from 2008 to 2018, 274 car versus pedestrian accidents in this area. There were 146 car versus bike accidents in this area. This is the car versus car. Obviously, most of us get around in the car. Without including 235, there were 11,051 accidents in this area, 15 of them fatal, 179 major injuries. And so, as we look at this, I just ask you to be as quick as possible to bring this back to council. I think that if there's anything I can do to answer additional questions or concerns, I'd be happy to, because I really think that as Move DSM really shows the city's commitment to safety, Connect Downtown is intended to be the core of Move DSM insofar as it is the core of the city and the portion of Move DSM that is covered by Connect Downtown. So, again, thank you so much, and I really am excited about the plan. I know a lot of work's gone into it, and I appreciate all the efforts that the council and staff has taken. Thank you.
Larry, I want to thank you for the years that you put in on this with Urban Land Institute and also your own personal time and thoughts to move a variety of things around, including some of our environmental work. So, hope you keep it up and keep up the work on the piano. It sounds like it's moving forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Josh has.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. No, go ahead.
So, one, I want to start my comments by thanking the staff and the stakeholders who've been part of this process. I know a lot of good thought and work has gone into this, and I think it shows through in the document and in the responses, and I think we will benefit from the work that has been put in on the front end of this for years to come. I'm very excited about this vote and adopting this plan and having Move DSM in place. I think first and foremost, it's about creating a safer community and a community that works for everyone, and those things are so fundamental to what we do as a council. And this sets up a roadmap and vision for how to accomplish that. It's the type of thing that will help us think about how we better use dollars, how we focus on our existing infrastructure, how we make our community work for everyone in our community. And that, to me, is what council is about, and I look forward to the implementation of this and to the continued discussions. I do want to add that I echo Larry's comments about moving the Connect Downtown piece sooner rather than later. You know, one of the things that I think, since I represent a large chunk of downtown, downtown is a significant neighborhood at this point. It's not just our business district. One of the great things about Move DSM is it helps us think about all of the uses that we have for a street or a corridor, and we need to do that with our downtown, too. As our downtown becomes more diverse and a source of greater strength, we need to think about how we make downtown work, both as a neighborhood and as a business district. And I know the residents in particular are very eager to see Connect Downtown, to make their downtown area safer and more functional. So, I'm happy with the step that we are taking tonight. I look forward to the next piece of this and to continuing to work to implement the priorities laid out here.
Joe?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thank you to our staff, Jennifer, Steve, Jeff. We went through this. I was on the subcommittee for a year. Carl served on this, along with the mayor, and we, you know, we had many discussions, some good, some bad. I think that we've got a very good plan here. I'm supportive of the plan. I believe it sets some priorities that we need to follow through on. The Connect Downtown is a portion of that, that we need to continue on looking at it. There's different views, and, you know, I know that it's been part of the plan, but when you talk to some of the downtown partners, they've kind of pulled back a little bit, and so, we need to make sure that we have everybody on board with that, and so, that's something that we're going to need to get that information before. Myself would be comfortable voting for something like that. I can't speak for the rest of them. Speaking to Matty and the folks, the thing that really stuck out with this plan is the lack of sidewalks and mobility on the south side, between Josh and I's ward. It stuck out like a sore thumb when you look at it. And, you know, I've talked to the school district, and they told me how, you know, kids couldn't walk to school safely, and once that plan came out, and we seen that, it showed where our priorities need to be, and so, I'm happy with that, and I'm not sure if there's any other... And I'm not sure if there's any other comments, but I would move 41 and 41A and C. If anyone else wants to, I'm sure maybe some others want to speak, but I can move it.
Well, I just wanted to say, Josh kind of brought up to the point of the timeframe. I'm disappointed that we're not doing all of it, because I think it's a working plan. It's not about what you can fund or whatever, but I just think that, what is the timeframe? Do we think this will be? Do we have any idea? Or is there some discussion on... Sometimes when you don't have a timeframe, things go on.
I thought the timeframe, we already passed.
Yeah, we...
For the vote on 41B.
We all talked about this.
We were going to apply for a grant to help pay for it, and we asked the private sector to match our money that has to...
I just think we need to...
And that, to me, is the issue. I mean, the price tag over the first two years has increased over $50 million for it. That's what the blue letter says.
Mr. Manager?
Yeah, so, I could, Mayor. There's really two pieces of discussion that need to occur, the funding and then the plan. And so I would say very quickly, we need to have the private entities come forward and have that conversation with the council about the funding, because if the commitment isn't to the level the council has asked for, that may impact the plan, right?
Right.
And so it...
Exactly.
It needs to be in that order. So I would say we could have that conversation very quickly. I could arrange that with the partnership and Larry and others to have the private entities come in and make sure we have the conversation about funding and then therefore the impact on the plan.
Because as we talked about this August, where we all sat here and had our strategic planning, we said we would put in our $7 million, but the private sector would come with their $7 million. And at this point, there is no $7 million from the private sector, so that tells me that they're not all bought in, because they're going to have significant money that they're going to have to put into their property. And I see Larry shaking his head. Significant money they're going to have to put into their property when we start changing streets, parking garages, entrances, exits, and they're going to have to put that money into it. And I want to make sure that they're bought in, so the taxpayers aren't making those changes. And as soon as they're bought in, I, you know, I can get there. But I haven't, they have not stepped up and said, yeah, we're all in. We're in. So I'll move 41A and C.
And with that, Mr. Manager, I think was sort of a directive from the council to try to figure out how we move B and what it takes and try to get it moved forward as soon as possible. All right, 42. These are items regarding the annual urban renewal report, A U R R, and tax increment financing, TIF certification. Council communication number 18-605A is advance of funds to the metro center urban renewal project for planning oversight administration, $800,000. B, a recommendation from the city manager regarding TIF needs for fiscal year 2019, 2020, and certification of TIF indebtedness. And C, urban renewal reports for the urban renewal plans in areas within the city of Des Moines. Anybody in the audience want to speak to this item? Seeing none?
Here comes Jeff. I will move 42A, B, and C.
Lynn is not at the table.
I'm sorry, I couldn't see. Six, yes.
Okay, item 43 is a resolution approving the preliminary terms of the urban renewal development agreement with Nelson Development for the construction of a home-to-sweets hotel along University Avenue between 26th and 27th Street, across from Drake University. Council communication number 18-606. Open it up. Anybody here from Drake or anyplace else who wants to speak to this item? Seeing none? Anybody have a motion?
Yeah, I will move item 43. I do want to flag and continue to flag the energy efficiency piece of this and getting that right. I know the preliminary terms has a placeholder, just to make sure, and I know Nelson's been cooperative in thinking that through, but I want to make sure that we get that right. And not sure if the 10% above building code is the right energy efficient piece or not, but...
Maybe Lead Platinum would do it for him.
Not going to ask that, but making sure that we get that right, because I would like that to be a part of policy and projects going forward. So I want to...
Joe?
Yeah, I just want to add, I see Alexander here. This is a great project to get started. It's going to transform a lot of the university. And we have a great partner in Drake University. President Martin has been to the table many times, and we're going to see some exciting things happen along that university stretch, and we're going to see some more in the future, because we're going to saddle that horse and ride it right to the finish line. So congratulations, it looks great.
And I want you to know, he is one of the most environmentally friendly people in the design industry in Des Moines. And I've met a number of times, and often he... I'm not sure you've ever come in a car.
Uber.
Yeah.
He comes in cars, it's an Uber car.
Exactly.
Safe way to travel, isn't it? That's more proud of them.
All right, do we have a motion? We have one.
Seven, yes.
All right, thank you all for sitting in on this meeting. I believe that concludes the items on tonight's agenda. And unless somebody has some ideas to the contrary, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for attending. Yeah, happy Thanksgiving to everybody.